Right now, we'll call our meeting to order for today. Just since we have a little larger group than usual, I'm just gonna let everybody introduce themselves and then we'll get the meeting started. We'll start with our clerk over here, our city clerk.
I'm Angela Owen, I'm the city clerk for Hamilton.
Scott, city attorney.
Councilman Scott Tyrell.
Councilman Ralston.
Councilman Matt Sam.
Paul Page.
Councilman Scott Robertson.
Tim Kirk, Hamilton Park and Recreation.
Oh, I'm Scott Johnson. I'm the reporter from the Journal Record.
I'm Bruce Higginbotham, I'm a Florida Higginbotham engineer.
My Johnson sanitation superintendent.
John Howard with Stoning Sons of Light.
I'm Jamie Christian with C-3, more close to Alabama.
I'm Wayne Dixon, representing the C-3 Economic Development Alliance today.
Hey, three, representing three-three, C-3.
Rodney Williamson from Modern Service Department, superintendent.
Wayne Maes, 49 County Hughes.
Matt with you with C-3.
We thank each of you for coming today to be a part of this meeting. We're gonna start with Mr. Higginbotham today from Higginbotham Porter out of the Bay area and they're gonna do some engineering for us on the 35 project, Highway 35. I want Scott Hut to kind of explain to you what we agreed to with the representative of Loves down there at the service road and then you kind of tell us where you, if you need to move from there or if you need to re-figure it, if you can tell us what you need to do after he explains what we agreed to.
Yes, Mr. Higginbotham. We met out at the site with Mr. Gleason and the manager there, but Mr. Gleason's a real estate guy. He would prefer us to deal with curb and guttering on that road. He said it's obviously the city's call, but they'd like for it to look nice like their interest way is. They'd like for it all to match up if possible. And again, with obviously the striping.
Yeah, yeah, maybe. I wouldn't, I guess they're kind of, that's kind of what I was thinking they were asking for. I think, I think Mayor Page discussed that with Luke. You know, when you go out and look at it, it looks, I guess, one question I've got is is that the road itself is about 1,100 feet, I think, I may be a little off just as I remember. It's almost 1,100 feet now. That's past Loves to the end of the access road itself. As we're looking at it, they, you know, I know Loves would like to see a curb and gutter at least to their facility. The question is that we want to go just the entire roadway and stop there, which is about 1,100 feet and that's a, a little bit past Loves. I'm assuming they might want to see that because it's in their general vicinity, you know, it looks good. You've kind of got two options to kind of let y'all know what you've got. You've got the curb and gutter option, which is their preference, and then just going in and milling and resurfacing the road. If you do the resurfacing, you're going to have to do some significant milling of the road. You don't have to look at it. It's got some areas that are pretty, you know, I'm sure it's from truck traffic and things like that, that has got it kind of off. So, you know, it wouldn't be a, just a straight resurfacing like you've seen in some of the streets around here, it'd be a little bit more through it than that. The idea of doing curb and gutter is going to increase your cost a few hundred thousand dollars. And the main reason for that is not just the curb and gutter, but once you put curb and gutter in, you've got a pipe or the water somewhere, you're gonna have inlets and things, things of that nature. And we're gonna have to basically collect the water and then go to the end of the, of the access road itself and that's where we would have to look at that, maybe releasing it. So, you know, that, that brings up the point that we want to try to go down a road of finding money. You're gonna be, you're gonna be a little limited on IE funds, they're probably not going to look at something like this, that's industrial access money and that ally has, you know, some existing business, you're not really creating new jobs, they're probably not gonna kind of fit the IE mold, which means you're probably looking at something that possibly tap funds, but if you do that, they're gonna, they're gonna expect a pedestrian component of what you're doing, which would be sidewalks and they're gonna, they're gonna look at it a little differently, it's gonna be a little bit, with more money. The other way to do it is strictly to get on the list and go see the, we show what we're gonna do and go talk to Mr. Cooper. Now, Mr. Cooper is not gonna give you, I think right now, we're looking at, I mean, your $600,000 plus looking at curb and gutter and pipe and redoing your road. Now, I would like to fine tune that, but right now, that's what it is versus, you know, almost 300,000, 250,000 in resurfacing. Mr. Cooper's probably not gonna be an avenue that's gonna give you, I'm just, just being honest, he's probably not gonna give you 600,000, but he may give you 200,000 or 500,000. I would think, but that's, that's strictly a matter of need and who's on the agenda and who gets that money that day. To give you an idea, that's kind of what we're looking at right now.
When I spoke with Luke on the phone today, he asked me about the timing on this job as far as whether we want to expedite it or if we want to seek these grant funds before we do the work. I didn't quite know what kind of timeframe we talked to Mr. Gleason on.
Obviously, they'd like, like it as soon as possible. I think the biggest issue out there, it's just the condition of the roadway. It's deteriorating rather quickly, especially the mouth of it. And so, from their standpoint, obviously, the sooner the better. I think from our standpoint, the sooner the better as well, just because of the damages being done to the road.
So, they want to move forward.
And even his, his effect, right, that road is deteriorating at a pretty good rate. The longer you wait, it's just gonna cost more, regardless of which route you go.
This is you come off the highway, a pool of water that stands there now and it helps erode the pavement away as it, as it splashed through, truck after truck coming through there. It seems that that's a plague in itself and then we need to get that corrected as well as the importance of surfacing the road, as has been already discussed, so.
Yes, sir, that's right. Anything we do, even if you resurface, we're gonna have to do some, some leveling, some milling and things like that to get that road level where it drains. Because right now, it does hold water, and that will make it worse as you, as you know.
Ladies and gentlemen, referred from Mr. Higginbotham, Scott, what do you think, council?
I think it needs to be done. I know personally myself, going through times I've been down there, a lot of, a lot of people are choosing to use the turp, the truck entrance. And I know over time, just with all the traffic going in there, it's going to deteriorate that as well if we don't do it.
As far as any grant, could we find out possibly if we could get a grant before we just, is there a timeframe we can know?
There's always some timeframe. We could probably get a good idea of whether it's even a remote possibility just from talking to the right people there. They can't so tell you, yeah, you're negative unless it's appropriate time, but if they know it's a no-go probably, they can really tell you that kind of stuff before, before you waste your, your time.
And one important thing, maybe with them, is it is their road, so.
Exactly.
That might, might help with getting some money.
Exactly, that's right.
It doesn't look like there's a lot of wiggle room on that road, so to speak, you know, like you couldn't widen it. Would you be able to do what you're talking about with the road width that's there?
Yes, ma'am. The road, the road width out there, you know, it's, you're not gonna widen it much unless you start getting into Loves, parking, you know, or their property or the other side. There are certain areas of that road, it's kind of an odd road, it's not, it's not a constant cross section. In some areas, it's 25 feet wide, in some areas, it's 35 feet wide. You know, so, you know, we'd have enough room to, you know, if you curb and guttered the road and did that, we would, we would go in and make it a constant cross section that, that makes sense. And you would do turnouts into Loves, you know, something to look nice there, you know, within the ride.
I was just curious, because we kind of ran into that with some of the, with the state on some of the leakage problems that we recently had.
It looks like you would have one today.
After hearing from Mr. Higginbotham, what's your pleasure? Do we curb and gutter the entire deal or a portion thereof? Or do we, we know we're gonna resurface, but are we gonna try to do the entire thing with curb and gutter, knowing we've got drainage to go with it?
Personally, I think if we're gonna do it, might as well do it right, because if not, we'll end up coming back ham and haw to do it later. That's my thought.
I'd say just, most carpet, make it right, be done with it, but also, let's check and see whatever type of grant we can get to help with this.
Well, the curb will make it a much neater job, but the curb and gutter don't move the traffic, you know, although we, we need it to move the traffic and be a good road. So, I was thinking maybe part of it, but if your pleasure is to do it all and do it right, that's the direction we'll need to go. They've got to bid out the job, he's got to know what to put in the job. That's what the questions are about today is, we know we want to do the job, we've got to give him, go ahead to bid it out by the specs that we're asking for.
What's the timeframe on it? What's the timeframe on it?
Expedited, it'll be an expedited job, we can't wait too long with the commitments to those folks to get it done.
Question, what, what would be the difference as far as curb and guttering just beyond Loves or versus the whole entire, a lot we were talking about?
We would have to look at it. The way I look at it is going in and going the whole way, that there's not a lot past Loves, but there is some.
Right.
And the main, the main, the main reason we would go past it unless we just wanted to do the road the whole way to make it, is making sure we had a way to get rid of the water once we had it, you know, that we're not dumping it on Loves or whatever.
If we send water with our, our cutter in a certain direction, could we have a injection from people in the area there that don't want the water?
Yes, we would definitely have to look at a way to, to let that water out, you know, whatever outlet we use, we'd have to have some sort of energy dissipator or something so we're not, we would not want to flood somebody down, down roads from you. And that's what I'd say, they will look at as well.
Thank you.
Seemed like it was kind of simple when we started talking about it.
That's ours.
I don't want to get the lawsuit, but we're gonna get some other.
We can't talk about water with an engineer that I don't know about, right? Worried about.
Water runs downhill.
Of course, I mean, it does fast, but.
I, I like the idea of it looking good, but I think we might be creating a monster here and I'm just thinking out loud and I don't know.
Loves is the one that's requesting the curb, curb and gutters, I think.
Well, they wanted to kind of match what they had done, you know, they put a nice facility there and they curb and guttered all their area and engineered it in and we're trying to catch up now, you know, this road's been just a paved road all this time. Now, we're trying to go in and re-engineer something that's done years ago and if it wasn't designed right for that, going in, we may have some problem making it work now, is what I'm thinking. Could that be right, Mr. Higginbotham?
No. Yes, sir.
As far as?
As far as the buildup or what, what the road's made of?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, you definitely, anytime you look at something and not, not know what's there, if you've got problems, the road sinking, your pot oil's forming and things of that nature, there's a reason.
I don't want to talk about a problem that's not there, I'm just guessing that we can, that we might find something that we're not expecting.
Yes.
Usually you do.
But. You hope not, but, yeah, we don't know what's there.
At this point, I think we want to figure the job with curb and gutter. Is that, is that correct?
How much money was it? Sorry? Roughly about 650,000.
About double the cost. We don't know if we'll find the grant money as much, but we've done a look for some.
Gosh, if you did, might be here. Been on the max a few weeks. Either way, we go, as far as a curb or no curb. We still gotta fix water issues.
Yes, it's, it's a little more than just resurfacing. If you resurface, we do need to make sure we're fixing the areas that are holding the water, or you're gonna have the same problem.
Make sure we're not sending water home to those other businesses too, as far as coming off of that road.
Right.
If they don't have a curb.
Right. You would hope it's not doing that at the moment, but if we've got holes that are holding and we're fixing on that water, we'll go somewhere.
It's holding the water right now, it's not going anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. Gas station oil trick up the downgrade, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it blows, so it's gonna overflow the direction.
That road's pretty high compared to some of the existing, the existing businesses, the drains on them.
Okay, I guess we need to plan the, plan the job full-blown and then the whole, so you're okay?
Okay, we'll tighten up the estimate a little bit on that and then get everything to, next on that.
Do you have any other questions of the city?
No.
Does that pretty well answer the questions you had in your mind when you came today?
Yes. Give us everything we need to know.
We thank you for working with us on this and trying to get a good understanding going in so that we know what we're really doing. We wanted to improve the service road and I think we know now, we're more focused on what we really want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Does that pretty well sum it up, Scott, your opinion?
Yes.
Okay. All righty. We're gonna take, and we're gonna reverse our order just a little bit. We've got several representatives of the C-3 organization with us today, including their board and Jamie, their office manager and other titles, not what all titles you wear, but I'm gonna let you be the spokesperson for the group today. Then if you want to turn it over to one of your board members, you can, okay?
I've got a packet here for everyone, so.
You can use that mic while I'm right there.
If I have to, you don't have to.
Yeah.
My husband says a while.
We want everybody to hear you.
Thank you.
Just hit the button, it'll turn it on. Andrew left my phone shot. Turn it on, boy. The light button, turn it on.
Can I go sit down then?
You can sit up, I may have, you can sit down, just, just turn your chair around there and you can sit down. There's 14 reasons we need to be in C-3, right quick.
Okay. Well, I am actually the marketing and membership director for C-3 of Northwest Alabama, which is the Economic Development Alliance for three counties, which includes Marion County, Lamar County, Fayette County. And we have actually been in operation since September of 2010. And if we have time, I was gonna, Wade was gonna give like a little short history about our organization because we have so many new faces and I, I thought maybe some of the, the younger guys also might not know very much about C-3, so. But if you want to look in your packet, we have just a little flyer here that tells some of our benefits. We call it membership, it's really just support. I think you guys have actually been a pretty big supporter of C-3 in the past and maybe just a few years ago dropped out and, and of course, we want to remedy that because obviously, a united front is always the best front. But we would never treat Hamilton unfairly or disregard what they had to offer. If we had a prospect come to this area, whether you're a paying member or not, we show what you have. It's not, that's not what it's about, it's about everyone supporting this organization together so that we have one local office that represents everyone in our area. I believe we have three counties and 15 communities, which includes the cities and towns throughout those three counties, so. But one of the things that you also might want to look at, I put together this spreadsheet, it's on the left side of your packet, for the entire time that C-3 has actually been in operation, I wanted to list all of the new businesses that have come to Marion County and also all of the expanding businesses, so businesses that were already currently here, but they did an expansion and that way, I wanted you to see how many jobs and what type of capital investment have been made in all of these communities. And you'll be able to break down Hamilton by, you'll know the names of the companies, so the ones that affect Hamilton the most. Of course, everything in this region is a positive for Hamilton because we all travel, we, a lot of us work out of town, you know, we, we live one place, we work somewhere else. And then you also have people coming into town that work here and they're driving here from Fayette or Vermont or whatever, so that's why we felt like our three county was, the three counties were, they just kind of went together. There is one ad that I wanted to point out in here, if you look at this blue map, this is also something that we're a part of, it's called the I-22 Alliance. And we actually, our office teams up with Franklin, Walser and Winston County on several ads that we do and even some trade shows together. So, it makes us look like an even bigger region. So, that's a positive also. If you have any questions about any of these ads or anything like that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or one of my fan club would be.
Thank you guys very much for having us today. I wanted to give just a little history quick because as Jamie said, everybody just about is new. The organization, as she mentioned, was formed 10 years ago. Before that time, Marion County had its own economic developer. But the former probate judges of Lamar and Fayette Counties, as well as Bill Atkinson and Winfield Attorney, were really instrumental in creating this group. The problem was in the past, and this is one of the few alliances in the entire state, is that rural Alabama has trouble getting recognized. If you're in Tuscaloosa, particularly if you're in Huntsville, which is the boomtown of Alabama, or maybe Birmingham, it's not so hard to have leverage and political influence. So, we thought that our three counties together would have more influence in that particular way. The purpose of the, of the group is to serve as recruiters primarily for manufacturing, industrial, but they do get involved in some commercial sort of things as well as retailing, helping for grant monies, getting packages together for incentives for the companies to come in. Hamilton is the largest city in the three counties, Fayette being next and Winfield. And as she said, Hamilton has not been involved the last four years, but has been previous to that. So, what is good about Hamilton is we, from my humble opinion, since I live in Hamilton, but it's true, we have the best industrial park of all three counties, the best location, the best infrastructure. I-22 is a really good spot for a distribution center, a manufacturing facility for a whole number of things. But Hamilton does not have a seat at the table right now. Matt and Heath and I, there's three representatives, board members from each county, and then there's some what's called ex officio members that are non-voting members, but they're typically appointed by county commissions, the city mayors, as well as a couple of economic development groups. So, as far as Marion County is concerned, it's Winfield, Dewan and Brilliant, and Bear Creek has been involved until recently, and they're the ones that get involved in the appointments. So, that's something to, to think about. David Thornell has been with the organization since it began for the last 10 years and he retired in October. So, Jamie now is in the office and will be bringing somebody new in, in April. And would like for you guys to meet them, meet him and he could come talk with you more as well. We're just here for backup or to answer any questions, but again, we thought you might just have questions about the structure and how it works and what the mission is of the group. And that's why we wanted to be here today. Again, thanks again for letting us come. One more thing, I thought about mentioning, the Department of Commerce in the state, if you didn't know already, is doing a Rural Alabama initiative. They have a big website just focused on rural Alabama. They're calling it Ru Al with a capital A-L at the end of it. And two companies within the region were spotlighted on that page, was a bamboo company that's new in Lamar County and a glove company in Fayette County that has been really going like gangbusters particularly since the pandemic. So, as Jamie said, the organization will continue to represent Hamilton, again, because there's a lot of features that are really appealing for industry, but it's a little bit awkward because again, there's not, as I said, a seat at the table related to Hamilton at this particular time. So, if you have questions, we'll be glad to answer, but thanks again for letting us visit today.
Was there David Graham before?
He was. I mean, I say the David before, the other David.
Yeah.
He was located down at Community College is where his office was.
I remember.
It was a two-person shop at the time and because it felt pooling money would be better in order to have more leverage, they go lots and lots of trade shows and travel and, and try to make as many connections as possible all over the state and in, in the entire southeast region and sometimes all over the United States. We think that we're very well positioned for being a supplier for automotive or a distribution center. Hamilton is a good spot for those two things. If you look on the map and you see the Toyota plant in Mississippi and you see the new Mazda Toyota plant in Huntsville and you see Mercedes, we're kind of in the middle of that triangle. And we hope that that will be something positive down, down the road or hopefully very soon. We have an annual meeting every year, we were not able to have this year, they rotate from city to city. But year before last, the Mazda Toyota Vice President for there came to speak, we usually have really good speakers for that, a couple of county commissioners came from, from here. And you guys are always welcome any, any time. But I would, you know, just encourage you, try to get, you know, get involved in those ways, particularly when we have people coming from other places to, to speak and, and from all three counties. Anything else, guys, about, Wade's been around a long time and he knows about it, but I just wasn't sure everybody else.
Always supporting C-3 and I feel like it's an advantage for us to be in it and I always have, so maybe you know where I stand.
Well, with everyone pitching in, we have a rather large budget that you guys, you know, could. that you guys, you know, couldn't, couldn't do on your own, so let's all join together and let's, you know, lock it the whole area together, so.
Man, I feel like as far as our town goes, we have the best location, best with the egg that's on our interstate. Two industrial parks.
Absolutely.
Nobody has that, nobody in Marion County, nobody in the three counties has it. So we're by far have a bigger advantage. The more help we get promoted, the more opportunities we have to take advantage of this.
One of our disadvantages right here in Marion County is not being built this. So it might be something to think about with that spec building in the past. Yeah, the Fayette, Lamar Counties, those businesses I was mentioning and some that are coming online now, uh they're going into buildings that were, that were vacant. And that was part of the appeal for, for those two, two counties. But way dry, you know, Fayette, Lamar Counties, it doesn't get them very happy to work together, but they don't have I twenty-two running through either of those counties, so we have an advantage in that way.
When we bring a prospect to this area, we have this to show, Speed Rat Building, and of course, the I twenty-two industrial park. And of course, we can always show that for also, but most people are interested in this. We're just so limited on buildings. And I know spec buildings have kind of gotten a bad rap, but a lot of times this spec building will bring a prospect here, even if they don't end up buying that, they will end up doing something else, either in, in your community. A lot of times it just takes something like that to get on here. If you show that you don't have much or have anything, they'll just pass you by. So it's something to think about. I did put a little flyer in here about spec buildings, so.
Could we say that we've been extended an invitation to get back in the organization?
Absolutely.
Okay. We're gonna take this as, as an invitation to get back in. And um take it in consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Appreciate you having us.
We, we asked too many questions today, but we have heard there might be someone committed to come this way to lead the organization, is that kind of on the drawing boards maybe?
Yes, uh we actually um had nineteen people or professionals, I guess you would say, to apply for the position. Uh we received resumes from nine different states and this person is from Ohio. And so he has given his notice and he had working out his notice and uh his first day on the job here. Um if everything goes according to plan, it will be April twelfth.
We'd like to get acquainted.
We will get him over here very quickly, at least to meet you and then we'll, we'll have.
And spec building is on the agenda today.
Oh, good. Should we say?
It'll be discussed when we leave the room today.
Okay, okay.
So you guys didn't know that, but it's in the list, ladies and gentlemen.
Great. On the same wavelength then. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much for coming and uh we're gonna give this consideration, serious consideration.
Well, you know where I'm at, if you have any questions, please go over and give me a call.
Honestly, I realize you're working for C three.
I'm the silent one, this normally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the spokesperson, Jamie.
Yep.
And thank you both for coming today and joining us. Y'all can remain or you can adjourn, whichever is your choice at this point.
Thank you.
Um Tim, we uh moved you out of the line there to hear from C three, but we're coming right back to you now.
Okay.
You'll just come forward and uh make your presentation.
As uh as y'all.
Mike, your guest will be next.
Probably no. Lighting our only fields is inadequate. This is a chart right here that shows what they should be. Just about across the board, all different organizations from Little League to Dukes of Youth to Cal Ripken recommend that uh we put candle reading on the infield be fifty and the outfield thirty. So this is pretty much uh what our current is. Let's do some samples that are good. Don't worry, we're curbing it out on really good one. And uh it's a little bit worse than two, but they're very similar.
Which field is this drawing from?
That's the field, field one, one that's closest to Smoky Bear.
Okay.
So it's inside, thirty-one, thirty and thirty-two is.
That's the current count, that's what currently.
But they, they recommend.
Thirty, yeah, big deal on the infield and thirty on the outfield.
All I ask is can we keep the little thing where we.
Probably not. These, these lights were installed in the mid-eighties. And other than uh replacing some fixtures when they went out, that's kind of taken over to the next generation.
Would it be replacing poles that are just lights?
Well, we had, when we've had to replace some poles at different times, we're, we're like just uh, because the original poles that were on the, that field, one camp on the football field.
Yeah, that's that.
And they, and they replaced the lights there that can be.
Can this be corrected?
It can. Uh I've got a couple of budget prices here on some turnkey stuff, which is companies coming in and uh good, everything from the holes, controls, underground, lights, everything. This is uh Musco, which is probably one of the best. I said, we have, we could have a different option, but uh like I said, this, this is top of the line. This is another one that is uh quality lighting. He's kind, he's got it kind of wrote down what the cost is on the uh equipment and what the actual installation is.
This per field?
Per field.
How many fields do we have?
Two.
What, what kind of poles are we talking about?
That's concrete.
Concrete.
You know, of course, if we go back with wooden, it's gonna be a big savings.
Yeah.
But uh both of these have uh big, good warranties on them. I know uh Musco is like ten years on everything.
Really?
Yeah. Quality is like she's twenty-five.
It's LED lights?
It's LED lights. Real similar to what we got at those softball players, is that light wise and. Light wise, but tho- those are, those softball are not LED. The, the, the best thing about the LED, you, you do get about twenty to thirty percent more light with them and you also get a savings on the power, but the biggest, the biggest saving you're gonna get with LED is like in the gym where we replaced them. You know, before I would have to put those shuffles up three or four times a year, replace bulbs and replace the bulb here. So just the longevity of the bulbs.
Is Jamie value in what, if we're taking anything down? Is it worth anything to sell?
Uh I find somebody that wanted some of it, but it's, it's pretty accurate.
Yeah, how much value is it?
You know, the bulbs are thirty, forty bucks a piece too when you, when you start replacing them.
So basically it's the original, is that still the original, other than the poles, original?
It's some of the original fixtures, yeah. Now, fixtures have been replaced, you know, as they went out, so. This old metal halide fifteen hundred, five hundred watts, so it's.
Based on these measurements, do you think the field ever had a qualifying lighting?
Oh, I'm sure it did. It was probably a lot better when it was first put up, but as those lights age, they lose, you know, they lose.
Lose their glare?
Yeah, they lose some of that.
Reflective or?
Would there be any use for them lights anymore without them, like the practice soccer or anything?
Obviously, yeah, you could, we could use them.
And we need them somewhere.
It's just, they're just not adequate for what we're playing now.
Those lights could be added up at the troll trip or could they?
They could.
Just to give some extra light up there?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just looking for some input from y'all on, it's, it's bad, I'm gonna say that, just my personal experience and luckily we had had somebody get hit and fall, you know. It's, when it gets dark, it's dark down there, especially get those corners. Well, and, and like on field one, uh when you get close to the fence, it's gonna be down below that. And a lot of that, what, when it was reasonably put in, it was of course what the engineer that we just put up. And so you have some, some different spots that are uh better than others, but overall, it's a quick man.
I don't know when field two was built, that was probably what, late eighties?
Yeah.
The other fi- the fields where they have the girls softball, the complex, or their lights.
They're active.
They're active.
Yeah.
For your tournaments and stuff.
Yeah.
These are the fields that need immediate attention.
Immediate. But those lights at that softball complex are probably higher than those.
They was in.
That's the original.
Middle for nineties.
We'll be looking at issues probably down the road with those for too long.
They were done when the walking track was done back in the mid-nineties. That's when Ken Layes was the mayor.
Right.
And National Guard built those fields, so they used the weekends.
The lighting, lighting loads that uh we just, they, they go out, uh you know, they don't, they don't last, they, you know. We replaced them in the fall and I've still got, you know, got fifteen bulbs out over there.
What would, I guess, you were talking about they're not LED over there. I mean, what would you have to replace those LEDs? I mean, without, I mean, we have.
I don't know, you couldn't actually replace the holes, since of course you got the poles there.
Yeah.
So that's uh, you know, I, I would get some, I could get some pricing on it, it would be a lot less because you do have good poles, the concrete poles.
But I guess I'm thinking long-term if it's.
When we have to do that, it will be a lot, it'll be less than this. So these are two quotes here. That is, that's, that's two of the, probably the best, the, the best companies. And you know, if we need to look at, trying to use existing poles down there and giving more of each other, you know, you kind of temporary fix, but it'll be better than nothing. So if you have some input you all want, you could do.
I mean, you have, how many times are you ready to replace those poles, those?
The poles?
I mean, I know.
It's pretty, it's pretty, they last, you know, they last twenty, thirty years probably.
That's what I'll make bands.
How long will we be playing on these fields going forward, forever?
Hopefully. There, there's nothing wrong with the fields.
Might as well be some of the better, better fields in the whole area.
Players are, they're good, you know.
Something drove by there during the summer, then that'll give it.
I think if you got one choice, and that's to light it, you know, I don't think there's any other choice. You can't play with it in daylight, you're gonna have night games.
You gotta think, you're coming in, you're willing to come in and enjoy playing in a place instead of dreaming about it and thinking that it could cost them a game or something, just call it lighting and, you know. This is well overdue, it's been like this for a long time and um I don't know if we can do it all at one time, maybe do one this year, one next year, but they desperate to make it down there.
They don't want the worst. But if you combine, you, you say somebody like combining it up and field, is that what it's?
You might say the same for me if you did it.
I think we can take it out of the capital improvement sum of it, if you don't have it to all come out of the general. Because that would be improving what we already have.
I agree, there's gotta be a fund, you can't, you can't all come out of general fund, we've got other accounts. Something like, you know, that. It's for that purpose.
We've got some money in reserve, but we could do one. I, cool, I agree, I think this needs to be done. Can we get it done in time to salvage this season?
No. We would have to come in as soon as the uh, the year's over, in July, and do it again.
So is there a fall season?
Yes, it'll be done by then.
Or it probably takes a few weeks to do all of that.
It won't take too long.
About a month ago, when I asked you to check on this, I didn't think, I didn't think I'd be having the big one right now, but I'm about to have a big one.
Of course, there's other options, but you're, you're just putting it back on. I think the golf softball, for the ten years ago, probably when those got done in four eight, it was, I would say it was close to eighty for the colors and lights and everything, so. I mean, that's, that was ten years ago.
There is.
This is better technology.
Right.
You know, Tammy asked us to check on getting LED lighting on these fields uh when she was serving as councilperson and we thought that might solve the problem, but it's, that LED lighting just won't do it. I mean, we gotta have better lights, we're gonna have a, a light system.
Yeah.
Not just bulbs, that won't do it.
Well, you could, you, you can't put just LED bulbs in the whole.
Fixer fixture.
Yeah. There's no LEDs down there.
None.
Okay, let me see what we're up against, Tim.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Mike, uh we're gonna move on at this point to the matters of our traffic lights and I think you have our expert in the room.
Hello, this is John Holmes.
Howell.
Howell, John Howell, from Stone Blacker, Stone Blacker Sun Electric in Tuscaloosa. Uh several months ago, he, he and uh his son uh came and uh installed our new black traffic lights throughout town. Uh since then, uh uh we've had some issues with loops and, and such as that. And, and I know somebody has concerns about the timing of the lights and all that. Uh I wanted John to come and explain to you how our system is working and maybe what can be done and what can't be done as far as getting the lights uh operating to as, as best they can. Regardless of what we do, there's gonna be happy folks and there's gonna be folks that aren't so happy. Uh and that's, that's kind of what we're experiencing now. Uh but we do, we, we do have some loops that are out. Uh I think there's somewhere uh twelve to fifteen, maybe even eighteen loops that are out. Uh some of our lights are on timers, some of them are on loops. Uh so we got a combination of different things. Uh and John can answer some of these questions a lot better than I can as far as the timing of the lights, the state, you know, all, all these lights are on state highway. None of them belong to the city. Uh we have a contract with Aldott to maintain the lights, do the maintenance on the lights. That's, that's our only, only thing that we can do to it. We don't, we, we don't have the ability to set the timing or anything like that. That has to be done with a company like uh Stone and Son. Uh so all that's set up with them, I, I think you have to have some kind of certification with the state to do that kind of thing. So uh anyway, John's here to try to explain to you what's going on with the lights, what we can do, what we can't do, uh and answer any questions that y'all have. If you have some suggestions of how you would like things to work, maybe Johnny can tell you whether it can be done or not. Uh so just have my turn to him.
You will just come forward, we'll let you get this microphone and.
He's got a pretty strong voice.
I, I, my voice carries pretty well, but I'd be glad to.
Yeah, you don't have to have the microphone, just, just make your presentation from the podium there if you want to.
Well, everything you guys do deal with money, so.
Thank you for coming.
Well, no, I, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. As Mike said, we, we started in Hamilton probably a year and a half ago and our original contract dealt with. And our original contract dealt with just upgrading what you had with the, with the, and going with the decorative uh, black signals and. You had three control cabinets that had to be replaced and it kind of rolled downhill from there. Uh, once we got through with that. You have a lot of, um, all of your, the main signals through town, they are on the state route. Um, but. You have, at that time, you've got about sixteen, I think it was sixteen loops, I believe, Mike, that are bad. And what you're seeing when you, when those loops are bad is um, you're having to, we put it on recall, we have to take the. Anytime you have a sensor that's bad in the lane, and if you think of a lane of traffic, you have, each lane of traffic has a sensor. That detects a car and as that car comes through, it does two things, it, it'll detect it and it'll send it to. For all practical purposes, a computer. And that computer will recognize it and extend time for each car that comes by. Well, when you lose that detection, if you're on a side street or a left turn, you have to put it on recall, you have to. Tell that controller, okay, you've gotta come back to it every time now, whereas if the loop was working, it wouldn't. If there's not a car there, it doesn't service it. So what you're seeing in the complaints that you're getting is as many loops as you have out down your corridor. It's having to go back to, because you're having to catch it. And it's an extremely inefficient way of doing something, uh, of, of operating your traffic signals. And that's probably a lot of the complaints that you're getting. Um, now another thing about uh, the loops that I saw that were bad. Uh, and, and if you're familiar with what a, or is everybody familiar with what a loop is or uh, how it operates? Or do you, you want me to kind of go into the little depth of that?
Just go ahead and tell us what it looks like.
It's basically, if you think of every lane of traffic, uh, basically what a loop is, it's a coil of wire. You take a concrete saw and you, you cut, you literally cut a um, five by forty, five by fifty square or rectangle. And you put loops, you put coals of wire in it, and there's a piece of equipment that recognizes the inductance. If you looked at a, if you looked at it, if you were able to see the inductive field, it just looks like a bubble over that lane. And the metal in a car that runs over it, the, this piece of equipment detects that change in inductance. So it picks up a car and it sends it to the controller and it tells the controller, okay, you've got a car there. For every time a car goes over it, it's clicking, it's, and it's extending time. You, you'll have a set of, you'll have a set of time that when the uh, when the controller goes to green. Every car that comes in, it extends that green time. And then you set a maximum time, and then once that max hits, then it forces it off and it goes to, it goes to the next phase. So what's happening with these is a lot of them, um, a lot of, on the state route, there's no curves. And when you have these loop lead ends that are coming from the asphalt and then they transition to dirt. People that run over it, erosion, it starts cracking, there's nothing to support the asphalt, so it starts cracking. And a lot of your failures are at that point. So um, it's really not, you, it's, it's not effective to try to repair it, so they have to be replaced. If you replace it, you do, you're, you're falling back into that same trap. Um, there's, there's technology out now and it's actually been out for years. I, I actually retired from the city of Tuscaloosa and we, and we've started putting these things in, gosh, twenty-five years ago. And it's basically a very rudimentary camera that goes on a pole and it watches these lanes. And you, you actually, you literally draw a detection zone in it. And anything that comes through it, it does the exact same thing, it does, it just does it in the air instead of in the asphalt. The advantages to that is if the state ever comes in, or if Hamilton ever comes in, and mills and asphalt. You're grinding this loop up, so if you put, if you put thousands of dollars into replacing these loops. And then you have a paving project, or the state comes in and mills and uh, and re-asphalts. The investment that you put to repair it today, you're washing it, it's going away. But a camera will be out of that pavement and it'll continue to work. It, 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 and, and they, they're, they work extremely well, um, and the cost of them. And I'm not really prepared to talk costs today, cause I don't know exactly, we don't know exactly what y'all have in mind in uh, in terms of uh. In, in terms of cameras, but if you look dollar to dollar, the cost of replacing loops with a camera system. Is almost, they're almost equal now, where years ago they didn't, but now they're, they're close, they're very, very close. And so it's really a no brainer to go with a camera. Now, when you think of it, and I keep using that term camera, this is not a camera that you can sit in your office and look at, or. It's not like an ITS system or an intelligent traffic system system. That like what we have in Tuscaloosa to where you've got a room set up to where you can watch your traffic. Now, you can get really advanced to go that route, but I mean, I personally don't think you, that's needed here, but. Uh, you definitely need to look at upgrading your detection.
I've got a proposal right here that.
I think our quote.
This is to replace the bad loops, I think you might look at it and see if it represents that.
I think it's somewhere around fifteen or sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars to replace the, replace the loops, but again. Even at, at two or three years down the road, if we're gonna have resurfacing done, then you're.
We don't need the loops, we need the upper.
The thing about the loops too, and, and you know, uh. Some people would like to have the lights to stay green all the way through town. Well, on, on the loop system, you basically can't do that, cause it's gonna extend the time each time a car goes over to a max. So you got a flow of traffic going through town and all of a sudden, there's the people on the sides. Are like stepchild, stepchildren or whatever, and. Chances are here in Hamilton, the traffic's gonna stop and there's gonna be cars solid through, all the way through the interstate, intersections, they're not gonna stop. They're just gonna pile up through there and the ones on the side still aren't gonna be able to come through, so. Uh.
Have you recently done some for Haila Bowl or Winfield seminar, what we're talking about?
I think Winfield's got one of the main red light.
It's a, it's a, I think it's an infrared kind of thing.
There, well, there are the, the uh, the techno- there are so many different types of technology out there. And it, it all depends on what you wanna try to do. Um, there's a, there's actually a new system on the, on the market now that is, it's called Gridsmart. And what it does is it's a camera that one camera will look horizon to horizon. And you draw your detection zones in, I mean, it is, all this came from missile industry. I mean, all of this tracking stuff and um, it's just amazing what, how the defense industry bleeds over. But um, that, you're getting into some fairly big time money when you start getting into that kind of thing. Um, so far as actual detection though, if you think in terms of, if a loop is, if a traffic signal loop. And, and loops, loops have been put in for fifty or sixty years. Um, actually, when I went to work with the city of Tuscaloosa, there was, uh, there was actually several places in town to where. There were pressure sensors, when a car ran over it, it was, it was basically a contact. Uh, so everything has evolved, it's, this industry is like everything else, it is just evolved. And um, so you can go a basic camera system or a basic out of, it's, camera's really not the right term. Think of it as an out of pavement detection. It, the, the detection is not actually in the pavement, it's, it's looking from above. And um, there's several things that you have to look out for. Um, there's an occlusion problem that you, depending on the angularity of the camera where. Um, sometimes you might have to add a different camera, because if an eighteen wheeler comes by, it will de-clue what's behind it. And you don't want that, so. Uh, but the intersections that you have and the loops that you have are bad. Um, I think they all could be swapped over to out of pavement detection. And once you do that, once you, once you get your detection system back up, um. Your, your complaints are gonna fall off tremendously. Because if, and I think of this intersection right out, right out by this building, I think you've got some schools or something back here and. One of the loops that is coming from that direction from the school is bad. And so we tried to do, and, and we. Moderate success, you can put a program into the controller that will basically run a pattern during that time. So during the time of morning, morning school and afternoon school, or when school lets out. It, this one is changing a pattern to try to help with that, and it does help, but it's not solving the problem. If you put your detection back, well then what'll happen is when the school is in, all the cars that back up, it's just gonna add time. As those cars are doing, when, when, when it's over with, the equipment will recognize that, okay, well the traffic is going down. And it won't service it, if there's not a vehicle on any of your, any of your approaches. If there's not a vehicle there, the signal will never change. Um, if you look at down at Bevel, that's kind of a low volume intersection. And um, if you actually have, you have a bad loop on your left turns and I think coming out of Bevel. But if those were repaired, as long as there's uh, no cars coming on the side street or left turn, it'll stay green on. The main street all the time. And then when somebody comes on the side street, it drops off the main and then it, it services them.
I talked to Wes and uh, I said, Wes, I don't wanna bury all these loops in this asphalt and y'all come next to.
Right.
Ground it up and pave our downtown, he said, you're not getting any paving for a long time, so you can go ahead and put the loops in. And he pretty much told me that we weren't scheduled for any paving, north of Hamilton's gonna get paving, but he said our. I said, well, our roads are falling apart, where, he said, and I said, well, all of them down south of town here and uh. So, but he says we're not scheduled for any asphalt, so. I don't know, we could be good by a few years with the loops, I guess. But then we'll get them ground up again.
And then they're gonna grind, they'll grind, eventually they're gonna grind, grind them up. Um, but even more so, the failures, the, I will. I, and I venture to say even the majority of failures that you have in loops, it's really not the loop itself in the road. As, as I said, it's the lead ends coming in because you don't have curb, right out here, you don't have curb, you don't have any curb and gutter. That that asphalt butts up to, and that asphalt will float on the edges. And that's where they're failing, that's where they're failing. The, what's, what you've got out here is they're failing here. Down at Walmart, it's the same thing where the um, and I guess that would be northbound coming into town. Um, those, those are failed, and when I found that, that's just, that's right on the edge of the road where that asphalt has crawled. And people have ran off the road and it just, it just cracks that asphalt right there, and these things are only in the ground an inch and a half. So it doesn't take much for them to fail.
It's probably been marked for a while now.
Yeah, a lot of them, you can tell, have been out of service for a long time.
So most of our system on timers now, is it?
Well, every, for every intersection that you have a bad loop. And um, it's basically gonna be on a timing system, which is um. The only one that you don't have, uh, Walmart, down at Walmart, the side street and the left turns. And that's really what I was zeroing in on, because if you have a failure of a loop on the main street, you're not gonna see it as, as, it's not gonna be as evident. Is, you're not gonna see, the only way, if you were an engineer or a timer, if you were somebody that looked, zeroed in on this stuff, you would probably pick it up. But just a, a, a layman's not gonna see a bad loop on it, not gonna really recognize it. Walmart doesn't have anything on the, on the main street. Uh, Bevel has two bad loops and they're two critical ones, it's the one coming out of Bevel and it's the one turning into that shopping center. And if you were to sit there and look at it, watch that signal, what you would see is it, you would see it shut down and it would service those two approaches and there's nobody there. It, and it's just, it's the height of aggravation of a driver to pull up and see a green light coming out of another direction, there's nobody there.
At one o'clock in the morning.
Or at one like one o'clock, exactly, or in the middle of the night when traffic goes down, but um.
You have great knowledge of our city, why do you recommend for people like us?
Um.
You've got that in mind.
I, if, if I was the mayor of Hamilton, or if I was a council member for Hamilton. I, what I would do is I would go back with this camera system, I would go back for every, and again, it's a budget thing. Um, I mean, it's a budget thing, but you could wholesalely replace all of your loops without a pavement detection. And I think, I think that would be, as traffic signal, as traffic signal stuff goes, that's about as cheap as you're gonna get. Um, and like I said, cost dollar for dollar is gonna be close to loops, now. You're not comparing, you're not comparing apples to apples, because with a um, with a, with a camera system. When a camera is looking down at an approach, it could look at a left turn and a through movement. And if comparing that to loops, you would have three loops, side to side that you'd have to put, so your cost is three times. One camera will do all three of those approaches, one camera, you can draw three zones in, so one camera's placing, replacing three loops. Um, and so.
Will that camera connect to our cabinets that say on.
It will, the um, what you would have to buy is, you'd have to buy one camera, one camera per approach. No matter how many loops are out there, those, these traffic cams now, you can actually do eight detection zones. Which that's really kind of getting, getting out there, you'll never, you'll never have that. Big cities won't have that, but it does have that capability just because of the technology. So you're basically looking at one camera per approach at all intersections, and that will get your detection back up and running. Anything above that, you're really getting into, I mean, you're really, I mean, you're, you're, you're getting into a whole different stratosphere. When you go, go to anything above, once you're, once you get into your detection. And you've got the, you've got the uh, you've got the option of the state, the state will do your timings for you. Um, they'll uh, um, I mean, they.
They'll get you, they'll, they can bring in someone to do that.
Oh, they'll do that, they, they've got people in house that do that, I mean, they, in Tuscaloosa, they actually do all of the timings down there now. In fact, I think those same people would, in the same region, would do that, so, you know. And so they, you know, that, that is a, that's a, you know, that's a resource available to you. And with it being a uh, with it being a state route, you know, I mean, I don't know that it would be out of the realm that the state couldn't offer. You know, some, some help with it, they're, they're interested in getting this up, and my conversations with them, they're really interested in these loops or this detection.
We've, we've got enough complaints that we're gonna have to do something, I mean, we've, we're complaining about too. All these councilmen see the problem and the problem is, there's people sitting there that don't need to be sitting there.
Right.
In certain periods.
And you, and this will solve that, this will solve that within reason now. I mean, during, when the school is in, when this, when this school lets out. Um, it's obviously gonna build more time on the side street because of everybody coming out, so. If I'm on the main street, I'm gonna have to wait for that to clear. So, uh, but that's just all part of the, you know, that's just all, that's ju- that, that's just all part of it, as Mike said. The, we used to, I mean, we, we would say it kind of tongue in cheek, but when you get into a coordinated system. And that's a, that's, you're coming into a whole different ballgame there. But when you get into a coordinated system, you're gonna rob Peter to pay Paul. Uh, in order to get your main street coordinated, you're gonna rob from your side street. And we used to fight that battle all the time with people, like, gosh, I'm waiting for so long on the side street. Well, you're coordinated on the main street, so you're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, that is a good thing if it's warranted, but I don't know that. You know, I, I don't know that you're, you're, you would wanna get into something like that right now.
I somehow wish it was on, the use was on demand.
And that's what these loops will do, these loops will give you an on-demand, they will give you an on-demand service with every. If you think of your main, your main street, that's. if you think of your main, your main street, that's your main. Uh, you're gonna put your main timer on to that. And then everything else is on demand. If there's, if there's nobody there, it will not service it. If there's, if there's a lot of cars there, it will extend it. If there's one car there, it will come up, it will serve one car and it will shut immediately there. So, uh, and that's what you want. You want it to be as efficient, as efficient as you can.
It's like on-demand service, all the people better to be.
It does, it does. I mean, you'll uh, you'll see a huge difference out there. Um.
I'm wary about repairing the loops because I thought we were due for a pavement job, but Wes says that's not the case.
Well, you know, I don't know that you, I, I don't know that that should be the ultimate desire is paving. Um, because, you know, again, the, the failures that you have are, there are some lead-in failures. Um, at Walmart, northbound at Walmart, um, there has been, and it, it looks like it's been years ago, but there was some kind of a, some kind of work done on the shoulders of the road and they destroyed it. So it just, any, anything like that is taken out of the equation when you go, when you go overhead. Um, and uh, so, but all of your equipment can be adapted to it. It's just, you, you put a camera up, you run a wire back into the, um, into the existing cabinet, you put an interface to it, and then the controller, the controller doesn't care where that call comes from. It can come from an underground detection, overhead, it doesn't matter. It doesn't know, it just knows that, okay, something is telling me there's a lot of, there's one car or there's a hundred cars out here.
I have the cameras, so definitely our action.
Um, and so, you know, if, if you think that's the way you wanna go, then the next decision is how in-depth do you wanna go with it? Do you wanna replace just exactly what's out there now and bring it up? Or do you wanna go ahead and do everything from one end to the other? And that's not something that I'm asking. Uh, I'm just saying that's, that's for y'all to discuss later. And that might be a discussion that you have with Wes, because that would lighten the blow if, if they could enter into it, you know, to help, to help, to help fund it. Um, and so, but I, you know, I, I'll say this in listening to this, it's, it's been really interesting. I, and this is, you didn't ask this, but um, in part of the project that we have been doing with Hamilton, um, our next thing is, uh, we're, we're repairing some of your streetlights. And in, in dealing with streetlights, and, and the gentleman that was talking about, I guess it was your ball fields, there's not too many things in this, a mayor and a city council can do that will actually make money. There's very few things you're gonna do that will make money. LEDs will make you money. If you, uh, if you, when we swapped out all of the red lights in town, you should have your bill adjusted with Alabama power on your power bill. If, if, and I don't know, I, we have not really got to that point of what we'll do. But if, if we go LEDs on your streetlights, you should have Alabama power adjust your, your power bills. Because that's something that's gonna make you, it's gonna save you a ton of money in, in your ball fields. The, the gentleman didn't, he didn't, he didn't address that, but the, the power that you will save in your ball fields will ultimately pay for that ball field. That's staggering when you think about it. In Tuscaloosa, we did all of our streetlights, and if you're familiar with Tuscaloosa, all down McFarland Boulevard, down Skyline, three fifty-nine, fifty-nine. Every one of those, we got a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Energy to go LED. When we did that, our power bill was a hundred and, I think it was a hundred and sixty thousand a month for those streetlights. That power bill dropped to seventy-four. And so it dropped over fifty percent. And the guys down there that were sitting in your chairs were amazed. And that kinda money, that's a significant savings to go LED. So anyway, that's just food for thought.
Now, the lights that we're gonna replace are.
They are.
A couple of lights at, at courthouse.
There's four out at, in front of Bevel.
At Bevel, well, these lights here are blue. Uh, Bevels.
Yep.
Uh, Walmart, uh, there's several.
I think it's four at Bevel, two at Walmart and two at.
At courthouse.
At, is it Beck, Beck's?
Yes, yeah, they wanted to message churches out.
Right, two.
Yeah.
And what.
You may wanna consider, you know, but we had spoke about sodium.
Those are high-pressure sodium that are out there now. Those are the, that's, that's sixties and seventies technology with, um, they're yellowish, they're orange. And they don't, if you ever, if you ever have an intersection that is LED, and if you ever have one that is an older HPS or high-pressure sodium, you'll, you'll, you'll throw the sodians away. Cause it's a yellow dingy type light where LEDs will blast. I mean, it'll be like daylight out there. So, you know, that's another thing that is just really, um, it's more, it's a little more money on the front end. Um, but, you know, it's a saver in the long term.
Well, this has been really enlightening for me, so thank you for coming today. Uh, questions, or do you wanna, you wanna, we wanna talk and decide what we want for our city?
I'd like to make a recommendation for us so we can review it. You know, you know what you, what you think would be best for us if we wanna deal with the loops?
Um, if you do, if you, is, you know, and it, it's easy, it's easy for me to stand here and say this because uh, it's easy to spend somebody else's money. Um, but would you want to just do a wholesale change down these six intersections? We actually upgraded seven of y'all's intersections from Walmart to, is it Beck, Beck's?
Beck's.
Beck's. Beck's. Um, and then we did Second Avenue, or I think that's Second Street. So it's actually seven intersections. So, um, you know, you really have the option of just repairing or replacing what you have out there now, or wholesale changing everything. Um, and you know, we could give a price both ways. We could say, okay, this is a bare minimum, this is gonna get you by. But I'll add a footnote to that. When I, when I came through here was in November and there were sixteen bad loops. Um, when we were here the previous December, which was, um, when we started the, the signal project, you had, I think it was thirteen or fourteen loops. So in that eight or nine month period, you had two loops go out. So there's no guarantee that if you do the six, or there's, there might even be more than that now. But if just, if there's sixteen, if we do sixteen now, there's no guarantee a month from now, another one won't go out. Then you're gonna be right back where you are. Um, so that's just something to think about. I, 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 if I was, Mr. Mayor, if I were you, I would probably talk to Wes and say, look, if we go through and do it all, can we partner in this and get, how about, uh, uh, you know, if they'll throw in, you know, I.
They've got a lot bigger pockets than we do.
They do, and, and I tell you, they, they, uh, if I, if I understand it right, they bought all of the equipment in the first round. So, gosh, if they did that, uh, or that would really help you guys out.
It was.
And I don't wanna speak for them, but.
It was our duty to put it up after they purchased it. They purchased the lights for us and, uh, we, we decided to put them up. You know, that was our expense, uh, and maintain. But, uh, yeah, I, I think we need to look at, um, getting everything right when we do this. And, you know, we, we'd like to stop the citizen complaints. We'd like to feel better about it ourselves. We don't feel too good about it right now.
Well, I, you know, I can certainly understand.
When we, when we sat there and noticed there was something wrong when we're driving down the road, it's obvious that citizens are gonna complain about the same thing and it is a problem.
Why don't I do this? Why don't I get, why don't I get you a quote to replace all of the detection with traffic cam? And then just do what you've got out. And then that way you can, you can put them side by side and like, say, okay, well.
Please, again, please do.
And we'll, I'll, I'll get that to you.
Uh, you wanna come back and present it or you will just, you know?
It doesn't matter, I mean, I, we can, whatever, whatever you need is to do.
We don't have to pose too much on it, but we wanna get this done, you know, as soon as we can.
Uh, I'll, uh, I'll, I'll start on that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll get that to you and, uh, I'll, I'll send it to Mike and Mike and Ford.
Keep in touch with Mike and he, he's kinda, uh, Mike troubleshoots a lot of our problems here and I'd like to be, kinda talk to him and let him relay the message. Or of course, I wanna see the final print on the, on the, uh, proposal for us.
And that'll give you something to compare to with, with, with the loops, you know, you can.
With what it would cost to do the loops, that, that's the proposal and we didn't choose to go on that direction quickly. We're not, we're in for some paving, just looking at our streets, I don't think we would, but we're not.
Let me ask you this, how many, how many cities are actually still, how many people actually still buy the loops or use the loops?
Uh, you know, a lot of, even big cities are still using loops. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna portray that loops are not still out there. They are, they are, they are out there and they are being put in every day. Stone puts in, I mean, there, there is such a demand for detection that they've got a crew that's full-time that will go from Montgomery to, to, uh, to Coleman and sideline to sideline in the state. They do that whole quadrant of putting loops in. So people are putting loops in every day. But again, the, um, you, you have to look at the application for each loop. And if it wasn't for, if, if, if you guys had curbs end to end, uh, and there was another thing I was thinking about when the gentleman was talking about your, curb seems to be a hot topic here. Um, but if you had curbs to, to help with that transition, it would make that decision a little more, you know, I mean, it, so loops are out there, they're being, they're, they're still being used. They, they still work, they're good, they, if they're put in right, you'll get twenty or thirty years out of a loop. Um, but if there's any milling done during that time, if there's any asphalt cracking, and a lot of people don't like loops because any time that you make it cut in a, in asphalt, you're, you're, you're affecting the integrity of the asphalt. And, um, you know, if it's not sealed right, you, you, you actually put the wire in and you put a seal in, it's like silicone. And you seal it to the top. And if you ever have a break in that, or if you ever have a pothole starting, it starts a pothole and then it just starts breaking out. I can show you a couple in, in your town now that that's happening to. It's just starting to break away. Um, and if the asphalt is thin, uh, thin asphalt is a killer in loops. Uh, it just can't hold them because you're, you're already cutting them. Uh, you're already cutting the asphalt, but if it's, you know, we, we've cut into, we've cut in asphalt before and the saw actually throw dirt out because it went through the asphalt. So, I don't wanna diminish it, I don't want you to.
No, I mean, I was just, you know, I know, I know that I've been educated here, but, you know, it sounds like that, you know, weather, amount of traffic, everything, you know, is, I mean, cause that's why we rep, repay roads is because they deteriorate. They do. So you get into those loops and so.
Give us that proposal, please.
We will.
Take your time.
And, uh, anything we can do to help, you know, we'll, you know, on, on the streetlights, I've been working with Mike on that, anything we can do with that, we'll, we'll help you.
Mayor, could, could he look at our downtown lights, you know, we've got some problems down there, it's bad, or could he look at those too?
I don't think, I don't think they do those. Ask him. Hey Mike.
Yes.
Scott had a question.
Okay.
Could he look at our downtown lights and just say, give us some recommendations on them?
Yeah, well, uh, sure, yeah, we, we.
And our, and our revitalization area.
To give you that date on what we did, I don't, I don't know if we've talked about this or not. We had a regular, uh, sodium light, like the old timey lights down there. And when they'd have the festivals downtown, they would, it was too, too dark. So we thought we'd go with LED and we did. Uh, we put the maximum amount of LED bulb that the fixture called for, or the maximum wattage of the bulb that the fixture called for. And that's what's in there. And they're not any brighter than they were before. So I would think without changing the fixture, we're, maybe we could look at that and see if we could put a heavier, now those fixtures have a, a ballast built into the fixture.
Did you, what you put in there, was it just a retrofit of a LED bulb that was meant to go in a?
No.
HPS, or did you replace the whole thing?
No, we replaced the bulb with an LED bulb that was, actually the LED bulb had a ballast in it.
Yeah.
So what happened is, is, uh, it burned some of those LED bulbs back. So we, so far we've just put the original bulb back in there. But as far as brightened it up, the LED didn't, didn't brighten it up any. Uh, so, you might have sat on that.
If, on the Hugh Thomas Bridge in Tuscaloosa, um, if you're familiar with that bridge, it's the bridge that comes into downtown Tuscaloosa. Those lights were, uh, they were metal halide lights. They had a, they had a, uh, ballast in them. And the city wanted to go LED, but they didn't wanna put the, they didn't wanna put the full cost of replacing that fixture. So what they did was they took a, an old fixture, what we did was we took an old fixture with a ballast. Then we put a retrofit bulb and it sounds like that's what that is. So you've got a, you've got the power company, ballast, ballast, LED. And it just didn't work. I mean, it, it just, it, it just, I mean, it sounds good in principle, but it really just didn't. I mean, it was just, it was, it just didn't, it didn't provide the effect that they wanted. So the only way to truly do it is to put a, 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 a regular LED light in it. You know, I mean, and you could do that same thing here on these light fixtures that we, we were talking about. You can get a retrofit bulb that will go in that HPS fixture. But, you know, it, it, you're putting an LED in, but you're not getting the effect. If you were to swap all these, these, I think it's same fixtures, you would, you would blast that, it would look like daylight out there. It would really look good. Um, and you'll be, when this gentleman was talking about your ball fields, you will be very impressed with those ball field lights. I mean, that will really look good.
You just answered our question. We'd, we'd put the bulbs in, but we didn't put the fixture in.
Yeah, that, that's, you know, that was a niche thing that came out when LEDs first started coming, coming out. But it doesn't have a design, that whole fixture's not designed. You know, you, you're, you're kinda taking a, you're kinda taking a, a nineteen sixty-eight Caprice engine and putting it in a nineteen, uh, two thousand and twenty Mustang is what you're trying to do. And it just didn't work, I mean.
Apparently we didn't get the LED fixtures when we put the revitalization in, but, but.
You're impressed, I'm, I'm telling you, once you get, once it's all set and done, you will be very impressed. It, they really look good.
We'll talk about that some more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else I can help y'all with?
Y'all gave a lot of help to us already, we thank you for what you've already done.
Well.
And we look forward to working with you some more.
Anything we can do to help, we will.
Rodney, front and center, please.
Thank you.
I appreciate the love. You can, you can go. Be careful with that, um, please.
We're gonna get to you and your, your friend in just a minute. We're gonna listen to your entire presentation also. Rodney's got a, a crisis situation, he's gotta talk to us about the date. And we don't have the time, we gotta react to this one, guys. Pay close attention to Rodney today.
Some of you may already know, uh, back about two, two weeks before the asphalt hit, uh, our power has some contractors up there around the water treatment plant, been doing some transmission lines up there. And for a short time, we lost power there at the water plant. And our, our backup generator, uh, did not come on at that time. So we called Taylor Power Equipment out of Birmingham, because everyone that services our, our generator. And he came up and, and diagnosed what was wrong with our generator. And he told me, he said, uh, it's not gonna rain. And what he explained to me was something internally in the diesel engine went out. I don't know if it blocked up or, or whatever happened. But he said we had diesel fuel in places, we're not supposed to have diesel. So at that point, uh, I said, well, we. So at that point, uh, I said, well, we got to have something in place. So at that point, uh, he called Taylor Equipment and, and they had a rental generator that they brought in to the plant. And, and they, they called in and said, we need you to sign this form saying that, that you'll accept this generator, we'll bring it in as a rental. So that's what I did and, and by that point I knew the, the ice storm was vastly approaching and and I knew we had to have something in place to operate the water plant in case we did lose the power again. Luckily, at that point, when Alabama Power had the contractors up there, it, it only stayed off for a brief period of time and they got the power back on and the plant went back to running. But we had it, we had the rental generator in place when the ice storm hit and we ran it for probably three days, two, three days, two nights maybe. And of course it did the job. Uh, and the next thing is I, they didn't really tell me exactly how much the rental generator is a month. I still don't have a definite figure on how much it costs to, to rent this thing a month, but I know it is extremely expensive. And we're, we're, we're gonna have to look quickly at replacing that generator. Uh, and what, what the gentleman, Taylor told me, he said, uh, you know, he said you could have a diesel mechanic come in and break the engine down and look at it and see what's wrong with it, but you still got a thirty-year-old generator sitting there. And he, he didn't think it would be worth the cost to, to even getting, getting it looked at to be repaired. Because he said it would be extremely expensive to get it even looked at. So Taylor has, has gave me a quote on, on a new generator. Uh, I'm waiting on another quote from another company on another generator. And I tried to, tried to, uh, think of all the options I had. Uh, the generator we had is a diesel engine, it's a Detroit Diesel. Uh, I explored the option of going with natural gas, a natural gas generator. And of course, we don't have natural gas currently ran out to the plant, it is up there, nobody has to drive, but it, it don't come all the way to the plant. And I, I asked the guy Taylor Equipment about it and he said, uh, natural gas is significantly higher than a diesel. And as far as they're concerned, as far as their cost. So I, I checked with Heath, meeting with a gas company and, and they did me a, a quote on a Kohler generator. And it is quite a bit higher than a diesel. So I, I'm thinking my options are down to a diesel, going back with a diesel generator.
And we keep in mind that this is a backup.
This is a backup generator.
We're still gonna be on electricity.
Okay.
But this thing saves us in a crisis and we gotta have it.
Probably most, most of all, AM requires us to have one. They require you to have backup power, so.
Do you have a cost for that Rodney, approximately, for diesel?
A diesel, the one I've got, hold on now, uh, this is not installed, this is just for the generator and, and we have to, we're gonna have to put in a new, uh, automatic transfer switch as well. And that, what that does is when the power goes off, it switches it over to the generator, generator kicks on and runs. When the power, line power comes back in, it kicks the generator back out, puts you back in line power. Uh, the quote I got so far is around seventy-five thousand dollars. This is a three hundred and fifty KW generator. That's not installed.
What's the delivery time on one of them guys?
That's another thing, it's, uh, a delivery time on getting the generator is, what, three different ones were told me, ninety to a hundred and twenty days. So you're looking at basically three months to get.
Basically, we're looking at ten thousand a month for renting one.
How much was the gas?
Natural gas, the quote I got was, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Is this installed?
No.
Do you think get, do you think getting the gas that we'd run into this, our diesel, we'd run into this problem eventually again? That, you know, at some point, maybe it is twenty years down the road, but, you know, I mean, you always run that possibility, right?
Yeah. And, and keep in mind this generator, it, all the generators we had, we've had, uh, well, this one is the only one we've had it to work in, but it, it comes on twice a week and does a test run. And it, it came on the, the week it went off, the week it didn't come on, it, it came on a couple of days previous to that and run a cycle. Uh, we don't know what happened internally in the engine. Uh, we, we have kept it maintenance, we've kept oil change, we've kept filters changed and everything's been kept up to par with it.
How much do you cost us to rent it for a month?
Well, the, the original quote I got on it was ten thousand dollars a month. But they, Taylor has, has told me, you know, if, if we say we're going back with a tighter generator, which will have, I forgot what that, you know, what it's in it. But they say they're gonna work with us on the, on the cost of renting one.
They've indicated they'll work with us if we do business with them and, and, you know, what.
Yeah, it'll take you months to pay for them. That's why, that's why my mayor and I said, we've gotta act on this pretty quick.
At that cost, we can't keep going in that, in that direction. Uh, we'll soon have one paid for, a generator itself. Rodney's got another gentleman, he's in the same business, he, he gave Rodney a bid on a big generator, but.
Yeah.
We, we, we don't, we don't want something bigger than we need, we, this, this three fifty is the size we need.
Yeah, he actually, he was at the plant today and, uh, brought a, brought in a electrician with him. And that's another thing, I'm gonna get a quote from him on what it would cost us to install this thing. To install the automatic transfer switch and wire the generator in and work. Cause Taylor Power told me they don't have these certified electricians to do that, you have to hire somebody else to, to certify, to install them.
We really need to try to get this on the agenda and get something moving on it quickly.
How long would you have to wait on the natural gas, you know?
About the same timeframe.
So it wouldn't save you rental?
Does this company offer gas?
They do, but he's the one that, Taylor told me, you know, gas is eighty percent higher than initial cost than a diesel.
Don't think this can be repaired, they're just assuming it can or at least.
Well.
Oh, it can't be.
I actually, I actually called, they, they located a diesel mechanic and asked him if he would look at it. And I told him it was a thirty-year-old Detroit Diesel. They said, wasted in the town.
Rodney, get all the, most you can, at least we're at the meeting Monday night. And we might get enough on the table, we bring it to a vote if we could decide which direction we wanna go. We'll have some more discussion before we bring anything to a vote, but we need to move on this, we can't sit still.
And as far as the, as far as the amount goes, uh, that's, that's why I had a hundred and fifty thousand in my budget for repairing and maintenance at the water plant. So it, it is in the budget. I think Angela had sent me the information on my current up-to-date budget stuff right now.
I hope we don't have a lot more surprises.
Yeah.
Uh, Rodney has provided you guys with, uh, uh, some water figures here, the wholesale water figures, uh, for eighteen.
I haven't gave them a copy yet, so.
Everybody's got a copy and I want you to be studying on that, we're gonna, our contract with our rural water was up last year, we haven't addressed that, so we'll need to come back to that at a later time, but he has provided that. Uh, thank you Rodney. Uh, Angela's got a, a personnel issue that she needs to bring up and then we're gonna move to Andrea's part of the program.
Uh, no, we had budgeted to hire an extra person and admin to help us and I know in years past, it's always just been the city clerk and like the mayor's secretary, well, those days have long been gone and, um, right now it's kind of got, Sheila Ferdina answers her phone, but we're, she's filling in for Jenny Palmer in the municipal court and she helps them in the water, she helps us with business license. And I know for a fact, when you're trying to do a business license or conduct business, when it was just me and Amy and that phone is ringing constantly and you're, you know, people get aggravated when they're sitting there in front of you and you have to keep answering the phone. And, I mean, I, I've had one person, he got very upset with me and I couldn't help it. But, um, we're kind of incorporating Sheila into some of this, cleaning up these properties y'all were speaking of and, and she's gotta get a little more involved with that, so the plan was to, to kind of move her to maybe a, a different desk, maybe in that same area, but not have her priority be answering the phone and taking all the work orders from the street. To hire another person for that and, um, and use her, I mean, I still think there's plenty to keep her busy, I talked to her about it. Um, I've talked to, to Amy and, you know, just to see if we could use that person and I think we can. Because if she was getting into more specific things, then she needs to be able to do that and not have to answer the phone constantly taking work orders for the street department, so. Uh, that was the one thing, I kind of wanted to be able to, to have y'all's permission to go ahead and post that job in the paper, so we, cause you know, it's such a longer process now, by running it in the paper and taking applications and interviewing. But I'd like to have that on the agenda for Monday night, to post that up.
You gonna follow me?
Hmm.
Just follow me.
Cause we need that person, we really do.
I did meet with, uh, the representatives of Alabama Power, uh, this week, uh, Rob Stewart and Melinda, Melinda Weaver. And they were here on matters of economic development and strategic planning in reverse order, then I presented them there, strategic planning and economic development. And they brought a proposal for us to look at their spec building program, we're gonna discuss that in our next workshop. Um, that's gonna be a portion of it and, uh, we're also gonna be expanding on our cleanup program in our next workshop. Andrea, you're up. We then get a turn to the other room to do the presentation. She's gonna talk with us, uh, about, uh, the.
There's a couple of things I'm working on this week, I've got the design team working on specs and details and I've got someone stopping by tomorrow to look at some things. Matt had done an investigation for us on the roof and do you wanna share what you've told me?
Um, basically it's, it's, I mean, we can file a claim, it's, it's wind damage. Um, I took pictures of it and, uh, you know, it's just basically let's, I mean, we can get a roofer or somebody to give us an estimate and if we wanna file it, we can file it and if we wanna pay it, we'll pay for it, we can pay for it.
We couldn't put it in the project.
I'm gonna say it's gonna, it's gonna be a whole roof.
Here's a drawing showing where there's problems on the roof, Matt, if you wanna look at that and kind of tell them. Uh, kinda, you see that roof where we talked about some things?
Yeah, there's, I mean, I mean with the flashing on the back and then you got, you know, the, the spot on the front and I even saw a couple of other spots on the back. And the soffit damage, I mean.
By the time you repair those?
Yeah, and it's not gonna look right if you don't do, you know, the entire roof, um, if you're just gonna patch it.
We got a duck on that, I don't know.
I think it is a thousand, I have to double check on that.
Thousand versus eighty-nine thousand?
If Storm did it to us, I'm for filing a claim. If it's, if bad workmanship, you know, we might have to eat it.
I think.
I think it's gonna, I mean, it's, it looks like, cause I mean, it's blown up, the shingles are blown up and also there's like a tree.
I think there was a limb on there.
A limb that was shoved through the roof.
Did anybody else see that limb up there?
So it's, uh, it's obvious that it was wind related, so.
The other, um, the other, um.
We can get an investor in Matt to give us the form, or you, you do that.
We can get, I can get a roofer, I can get a roofer to buy a, buy a mower to go look at it and then based on his recommendations.
Y'all wanna handle that separate from my bid?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
Okay, that's one thing I can make a note of. The other thing is materials for the deck, I know we've talked about some different things and I'm gonna place, this is an existing deck that they had outside, the, uh, existing ramp that's there that we're removing and putting back is made out of the same material and looks the same, very slippery, I almost fell. So I, I would like for y'all to consider other materials, Scott had mentioned some materials.
Can we use composites?
Well, that's what I would put in and then also have an alternative concrete, if y'all want me to do it.
It's exposed to elements, we don't need to use a real wood.
I, I think the concrete would be a good, uh, option if it's not too expensive. It would just be a continuation of the sidewalk and then we can look at the composite as well and just do it to, as an alternate in the bed.
Okay.
Um, the roof, the materials, and I did want to show y'all, it is a beautiful location. I think people will enjoy it when it's restored and, 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 and you've done all this work. Our exterior lighting, we will not have this happening before floods, we need to.
That's not code, is it?
No, and this also shows one item of ca, of exterior painting and interior painting that we want to maybe scrape and look at the extent, you know, how extensive we want to paint certain areas, so. That was another thing I was gonna look at.
Our spotlights don't let us through a lot of the weather, so.
And this is, for those of you who may not have seen the inside of the restrooms, this is what we have, two of these and they don't meet ADA and I'm looking at moving this wall, uh, right here into that mechanical area about two and a half feet or two feet, so that's what we can do to make it ADA compliant when we send it to this state. And then also, have you all been up on the upper level to see the porch area, it's cupping, it's, it's, it wasn't put together right nor using good materials, so, um, that's another area that we're gonna address with the drawings, so I, I've got it on the drawings, but I thought pictures did better. Um, is there any other questions or areas that you wanna talk about? There's other, one other request I have.
Well, we're gonna redo that ramp in this action?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll have two ramps, one to the restroom and one to the building.
Okay.
They'll be new and with handrails and the handrails on the front and the upper porch.
Good.
And the new roof and any scrapes or any paper that's peeling off or anything that's damaged in wood will be replaced. And we'll have a unit price for wood going in because once they tear this off, it might have something underneath it that needs to be replaced. I think that's a good summary, the only other thing I need is confirmation of the property lines, I don't know if you have the surveyor that, I think Mike Lindley did it at one time, if one of you want to contact him or I. If one of you want to contact him or I'd spoken to him and said to be thinking if he had it, huh?
They're not Mark Andrew?
Huh?
Are they not Mark that you can tell?
Not that I can tell and we need to know and I need some spot elevations, so just for the ramps. And, um, so I've generally.
Who do you think has the survey?
I think Mike Lindley did it at one point, but if not, I can get it done otherwise.
I'll call him. I'll call him.
Okay. That'll be good.
If he's got it, I'll give a copy.
And if he doesn't, let me know and we'll get somebody else.
Right.
This company. We'll get, get Robin to.
That's not the name of our company, somebody else.
We'll get Robin to send someone up. At that, I will like to introduce to you Robin Gregory. He is a land planner with Gonzales Strength and Associates in Birmingham. They worked with me on the, um, rec center, doing our civil work at the rec center and, uh, several projects I worked with in Birmingham. I'm really proud to be associated with the company and he's going to, um, they actually knew when I first mentioned to, to councils ago about the property that we're talking about near the Buddy Hatchie. And that's the, the video that I've shown. Have all of you had a chance to see the video that we did back then? If not, I will get you a link. We were trying to put it on here and it wasn't working, but, um, back then they were thinking of a multipurpose building and just having a nature trail around the edges. And I show parking and I kinda show the scale of the site, which is huge. And so, um, I'll make sure each of you have that. Tim, have you seen it?
I don't know.
Okay. I can send you a link on your phone. Scott's seen it. You haven't seen it? Wait.
I don't think I've seen it. If you've seen it, Tim, I do.
Well, okay. I thought I'd sent it to a couple.
It's coming again then. It's coming again, huh?
I'll get, I've got your email addresses, but I'll get.
I would doubt it. Most of our council have seen it, but I, I've seen it.
Do you still have the link, Scott?
It's really, it's really a nice presentation.
If you've got it on your phone and you have all their text message numbers. I don't have everyone's cell number, I don't think, but, um.
Was it sent by email or, um?
I, I sent it to several people by phone text and you, you know, you may have deleted it or something. But, um.
Is it just a representation of plan?
No, it's, it's a walkthrough and a flyover. It uses drone pictures. And I don't know, did you take drone pictures?
I got, I got some of it.
The firemen took some pictures when they first got their drone.
Probably last year, I think.
I wish we could play it, but we're not gonna chance it right now.
We tried for twenty minutes.
We may, um.
You probably heard us in here, you know.
I think I'll save for another time. We're all tired of things, but, um.
Okay.
Let Robin talk to you about some ideas I've heard that you're interested in on that property and y'all be, uh, thinking of questions.
All right. Well, thank you so much. I, I'll try to make this pretty quick cause I know you all are probably pretty tired after your long work session. Uh, I'm, uh, Robin Gregory. I'm with Gonzales Strength and Associates. And, uh, what I wanted to show you is just a couple of different projects that we've done that have soccer fields and have walking trails and has a lot of different elements. So we'll go through that pretty quickly, um, but, um, I'll just run through it here. It looks better if I cut the lights off, if, if that's okay. So we'll go ahead and get started on it. Uh, Gonzales Strength are a multi-disciplinary firm. We've got civil engineers, surveyors, landscape, I'm actually a landscaper architect and a land planner. Uh, and we also have transportation engineers and we have about, you know, you can see all the different types of work that we do. Uh, we're working throughout the southeast. Uh, we have about seventy employees and, uh, most of our employees have been together with us for over ten years. So very senior, a group of folks have been working together and we've been in business for sixty some years. And we'll go ahead and, uh, this is actually called Sand Mountain Park, if you're familiar with that one. Yeah, we, uh, we worked with, uh, with the group on this project, uh, this with the city of Albertville, about a hundred twenty-five acre park. It's, this has a pretty good sized budget, about seventy-five to eighty million dollars. I don't know if you've visited, but I'm not sure, you know, this doesn't really show up on it. But you can see the middle, we've, our portion of the work, when we worked as part of the team with the architects and the other folks as well. Our part was looking at the overall master plan and then doing the sports fields. So you can see in the middle, you've got five softball, upper right, you've got four baseball, tennis up at the top. To the left, you've got, uh, RV area and I guess I could get over and actually point. Amphitheater, about five thousand seats here, five, um, soccer, multipurpose fields here. And then all of the fields are synthetic, uh, astroturf, so quite a bit of money there, but they were trying to do it for, uh, the purposes of doing tournaments and build to have play even when it's raining. Then you have the recreation building back over here and, uh, you also have an outdoor, uh, pool area as a part of that. This is the, um, the softball area here and we've worked very hard on the plaza areas and the connections between it. Really tried to make that more of an experience. And you can see the baseball fields here, how the parking works with it and the plaza areas that work with it as well. Uh, this is after it was just constructed, just a shot, so not a very high quality picture, but you can see how it's lit up. And then here's some actual pictures of the synthetic turf and the logo and the bleachers in the back. And this is some of the artist renderings of, uh, some of the playground areas, uh, another playground area. And then it has a lot of nice, it has like more of a signature field for the baseball and softball, which is really nice to have that because you have more, you know, much more. Uh, you know, that's your prominent location for if you're gonna have a tournament. So we've also had that set up that's covered. And then you can see the, the soccer fields here. And then a couple of shots of the recreation building, kind of a lazy river that runs around the, um, the pool area. Amphitheater area here, about five thousand seats with a lot of nice lawn areas as a part of that as well. Some more shots of it with the ghost people. Uh, some of the just seating areas, just very simple structures with big masses of ornamental grass. So you can make a pretty good statement. And hopefully this will work. Uh, if it'll let me do it, you know, it has a little flyover here, so. This gives you kind of a view looking to the right is the recreation center, uh, the lazy river and the outdoor pool area. And you're kind of floating up and looking all the way across it. And it really kind of focuses more on the sports fields. Has a roundabout in the middle. And a great distribution of parking areas and here again, the plaza areas, the concourses, those seating areas, lawn areas and different playground areas really, uh, critical. Uh, actually gonna have the grand opening, I think April first. You know, they've had kind of a wide opening, but they're gonna be opened up to, for the public here pretty soon. This gives you a little fly through looking at the, the signature soccer area, going through the concessions area and the, and the portal. Plaza areas, uh, for, you know, having a lot of people just in that area. They're looking out onto the field. And to your right, you'll see the, uh, the grandstand area that's covered. Like we got one more. We've loaded you up with, uh, flyovers and elevator shots. But that's, and we had, you know, we worked really hard to make sure we had enough room between the fields so we're not having a lot of play that's going from one side to the next. Uh, another park, I don't know if anybody's gone to Auburn, but, uh, we've done a couple of projects over in Auburn, uh, Town Creek Park and Cemetery. Uh, this was a project that I did before coming to Gonzales Strength, but I thought it was important because, uh, it, it was not so much for the cemetery, but it had, uh, a, a town creek here and then we provided parking and trails and picnic areas and playgrounds as part of that. You can see some of the signage that we've got. This is shots of the cemetery. It used to be a farmer's field, so we picked up on that and actually saved the silo and picked up a little bit on the architecture of the bathroom on the left. Some of the boardwalks going through, some of the nature areas and then the lake, you know, very pretty picture in fall time. I guess you can take, you know, great pictures anytime and throw it into a presentation, but, but it is a very pretty lake. And we've worked really hard to save as many trees as we could and work with the environment as much as we could. Another project is the city of Foley Sports Park. Uh, this was the overall, uh, project that, that the master plan worked on. Baseball, softball, soccer fields, a big lake that's out there as well. Uh, this was, this was done, I guess about twelve, fifteen years ago, so everything's pretty much is kind of concentric, working everything towards the center. Now we've got a little bit different approach, looking at some of these concourses, spreading it out, making it more of an event versus just being as efficient as we possibly can with the, some of the landscaping. And then we're also working on, uh, a sports complex with the city of Lincoln. Uh, that's kind of the overall project. Uh, it's about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty acres. Uh, the front area here. Recreation center on the side, playground, multipurpose field. Uh, we've got a, uh, kind of a gathering area with a playground. Some bathrooms and parking that's going initially over, you get tennis courts and to the right, you kind of tie it back over to the multipurpose fields, about five of them. There's a loop road that ties off to it with parking areas that are distributed. I've done the walking trails that walk all the way through and then I'll, I'll back it up. Here, you can see up at the top, we've got some nice trails there with boardwalks and wetland areas. So we've done a lot of that kind of work before. Uh, and then there's an existing building that we were keeping and reusing that, repurposing that building. Uh, also Auburn, uh, just a tennis complex. It's got about thirty-four tennis courts there. This was a project that was done with the city of Auburn and Auburn University. They jointly, uh, combined to do the project. In the middle has got indoor park, indoor tennis courts and on the right, uh, is the side that's for the city. On the left is the Auburn University's tennis facility. Kind of a aerial view there, some of the shots with seating that overlooks it. And then just to show you another project, uh, down by Mobile Pritchard. Uh, this was an existing park project that was renovated for soccer fields. So we do a lot of that type of work as well. Just taking an existing, uh, facility and then freshening it up, adding more areas to it. We've got a community garden area, uh, added parking, added walking trails and cleaned up the, uh, the parking lot and put pavilions out in it as well. Some of the public presentations, some of the stakeholder meetings. And then, you know, why pick our team? I think it's because, you know, we have a lot of experience working together. Uh, we've worked on many projects that include all the different elements that you're talking about here. Uh, we've had a lot of in-house design services that, that could come to bear here from landscaper architecture to civil engineering, to surveying, to architecture. Uh, and then we've done a lot of both passive and active parks, uh, which, I mean, they're, they're very much different and it takes a different type of sensibility to it. So we have some really good recent experience from working on Sand Mountain Park. Uh, we're also just got to, uh, designing a soccer complex for the, for Auburn, for the city of Auburn. Uh, that has a couple of different, has a recreation center and it has about three new soccer fields and about two hundred and fifty parking spaces as a part of that. So we just finished those plans and it should be going to bid here pretty soon. And I think, uh, just another thing is just, you know, we, every project we do, we try to make it the very best it can be. If it becomes an award-winning project, that's fantastic, but we work very collaboratively with our clients and very much hand in hand. And we try to listen to them and make sure that we're giving you what you want at the price that you want. So looking at it from an engineering perspective and an architecture perspective and a landscaper architecture perspective, we put all that together and to make sure it's feasible at the same time. So it's not just a pretty picture, but it's something that's feasible and it can meet your budgets at the same time. So just showed you a couple of different projects. Uh, would love to work with you and it sounds like, you know, just a fantastic project. Any questions?
We're beginning to, to think about, um, uh, river, area of the view. But, uh, we've done it all cleaned up and, and ready to develop, but we haven't exactly figured out what all we want there. We want it to be inclusive for all of our people that live here, where folks can come and enjoy it. Organized, uh, groups, uh, like sports groups can come there and enjoy it, but just citizens can come and enjoy it. And we want it for everybody. So we're trying to figure out how to make it friendly to all, all the folks that come to Hamilton or live in Hamilton proper, so.
You know, sometimes you don't have all the answers. You don't know exactly what all, all the programming needs that you have. You might start with what you think it needs to be and then get some stakeholder input and meet with, you know, sports groups and, you know, solicit.
We've got forty-seven acres of nice property over there. It's not all level. It's got some ups and downs, but basically it's all usable for some purpose.
Yeah.
We just gotta figure out what, what best and, and how quickly we can develop it, how quickly we can find the money to develop it.
Right.
Uh, we've heard that some things for nature have some certain grants that we can obtain.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you're looking at walking tracks, biking tracks, things like that. Um, that there might be, and I don't know how hard grants are gonna be to, to come by in the future. There are missing grants out there and I don't know if they'll dry up or if they'll stay. I really don't know.
Mayor, the one thing I would say is have a master plan. Do some thinking before you do anything because so many times I've seen and you probably have to, they'll do something and then you'll wish you could move it later.
Yeah. It's an impediment to the rest of what, you know, a bigger.
Yeah.
If it was more, better thought out, it could allow, you know, something that goes here, something and everything work together in harmony the way that it needs to. So we spend a lot of time studying the property to make sure that we understand that the topography, any type of environmental issues, wetlands, flood plains, all of those different things, utilities. We study all the physical aspects of it and then we take those programmatic aspects, uh, the number of fields, what type of fields and try to figure out where's the best place to put that so we can give you something that's gonna be the most for your money. Because at the end of the day, you know, that's, that's gonna be what it's gonna be about the most is gonna be. How can you deliver a top-notch facility and not make it be too expensive? Make it be something that's, you know, well within your budget. And so we worked very hard on staying in budget, setting those budgets and then working with the topography mainly. So we can make sure that we're in harmony with nature and we're not, and, and that sounds kind of funny, harmony with nature, but it actually means, you know, looking at it and grading it and balancing out the cut and fill aspects of it and working and putting it in the right location and making sure that the location of parking and walking trails and drives are in the right location. So you're not creating conflicts with vehicles and pedestrian, uh, traffic from one side to another. So some of it's very logical, but some of it is also, you know, how do you go about doing it and working with the property? So I think the best projects are the ones that work with the property and, uh, it's gonna, you know, so you're not having to move a ton of earth and you're not having to put pipes somewhere. So you're working with as best as you can to save that money so you can, you can put somewhere you can see it. So that's what we try to do.
Well, our recreation has been known to be back in this area, right over here and over here. But we're over here with this property, so we're, we're separating somewhat. Uh, our, our complex won't fit together.
Yeah.
So we, I don't know exactly what we want over here. We're talking about a sports flex also, uh, somewhere down the road and, uh, for Hamilton, for travel ball to, to have tournaments here and this kind of thing. And all these guys have pretty much, you know, been involved in some way or other, either playing it or their children or somebody's been involved in travel up to the tribal ball programs and, uh, we think they're quite lucrative, uh, to some of the communities that's got good at it.
Well, and you can see with Albertville, you know, they went out and to try to build a facility, not just for the citizens there, but for travel teams to come in, you know, attracting all that tourism.
How'd they fund that?
Excuse me?
How'd they fund that?
How do they fund it? I think they had a, uh, a, a tax, you know, like a sales tax that was directed forward, but they, they had a direct amount that they had and then they also had money in there for the maintenance of it as well. So that was real important.
My jaw, my jaw dropped a bit when I saw that complex in Albertville. I said, oh my goodness.
Yeah. They're, I mean, they're not all, I mean, that's, that's a real showpiece to be honest with you. Those are great projects when you can get those, but there's not that many of them that are out, out there like that.
Those are great projects when you can get those, but there's not that many of them that are out, out there like that. But it doesn't mean that you can't have a smaller park that can provide what you need at a much more reasonable price and do a very nice job. But just to touch back on what Andrea's saying, you gotta have a master plan. You can phase it after that. You can say, okay, this year we're gonna build this phase. Three years from now, we're gonna do the next one. We can work all of that out. But here again, we work very collaboratively. We work, you know, with the stakeholders, with y'all and make sure that everybody is involved in the process and everybody's got their hands on it because that's ultimately is gonna be a better product when you do it that way. We don't just come in and say, here's my pretty picture, here it is, and then y'all say, well, you weren't listening.
I've heard Andrea say, get a plan before you do something. Get a plan before you do something. And she's said that many times and she's exactly right.
And sometimes you get good, good natured people say, well, we'll go out there and we'll, we'll put this in, just pay for the, the equipment rental, we'll do this for you. And they do something and it may not be totally up to snuff as far as from an engineering perspective or maybe put in the wrong location. So having a master plan will help make sure everything gets built the right way and you're, you're not kind of stepping your toe by doing something that, that you wish you hadn't have done. It's like, oh my gosh, now we, we could have put something over here and now we can't do it.
Call a sports place, four field, six field, whatever. What's the cost? Do you, do you know any type of cost, just estimate it, what you could be looking at?
It, a lot of it depends on if it's synthetic or natural grass. It also depends on the topography and utilities and everything you gotta bring in. If you're gonna light it or if you're not gonna light it. I mean, as you guys saw, lighting can be a, a significant number and it's on, but we have run through all of those numbers. And what, as part of that master plan, what we would do would be to give you a cost estimate and that number would say, okay, this is one option if you wanna go synthetic turf or if you wanna go natural grass or, you know, a combination of the two. Different options you can go with that. But we can price all of that out by looking at. But it, it is somewhat dependent on the, you know, the location and if you're gonna be doing, obviously if you're gonna be doing synthetic versus natural grass on, on that area. And then how much earthwork you're gonna have as well. A lot of times people forget about that, but that is another number that goes into it.
Well, may just say if the property's flat, I know you still gotta do a little bit of dirt work, but then what type of figures? I mean, we, just to, just to kind of have a, not holding you to it or anything, just an estimate. What, what could you be looking at on a four to six field complex?
Well, I mean, you can look, you can look at it, you know, a lot of times you break it up. And I think you just saw what some of the lighting numbers are. But you'd be looking at synthetic turf, that can be, you know, if you get it in a certain number, you know, like four twenty-five, four fifty and then, uh, natural grass being about two dollars and fifty cents a square foot or, or even less. So those numbers start running up as you start looking at square footage on a field and start running those numbers all the way out to the top of it. So we can get back, you know, next time we get together, show you some of those numbers. I'll have that out the top of my head of what, what, what soccer field, baseball, softball is from a price standpoint. I can tell you that there's a lot of negotiations that you can do to save money. You know, we got numbers and we got four of the top synthetic turf folks. Once we figured out that's the route we wanted to go and then we negotiated with them and worked them until we finally decided which one we wanna go with, which was, we finally decided on AstroTurf. And then they gave a number and then we came back and we said, you know, can you do better than that? And we kept kind of grinding down on them till we got a really good, good, good number.
Yes, yes, this room will have a bargain.
It looks like it.
What would be your biggest question other than price per field? Is there anything else, other facets? I've heard amphitheater, I've heard, what other elements have y'all heard people would like there? Have you heard anything?
I mean, you think about a walking track, it's, it's in bad shape. And it gets something that gets used every day, around the clock. And, you know, I would say that would, might be something possibly look at too, that, that's something that everybody can use.
Right.
And our track can't use that as far as competition. You have to go to Winfield or somewhere.
Not much length.
Not much length.
Yeah.
And that's been here thirty years, right? It's been a long time.
When it first was done, it was the showcase, I mean, everybody came here.
It was very nice.
But it's a little limited on what like seating and parking is limited. And that's, the parking is a big factor when you have these large events and you do have space down there. I've, I've done some, on that video, I've shown some parking and that was to accommodate the size of the building and the groups of people that would be there and the numbers of restrooms you have to have and that sort of thing.
And sports fields, are you looking for more multipurpose soccer, football? What, what is it that you're looking for? Are you looking for what, baseball, softball? Baseball, softball. Okay, we can give you some numbers on that.
A couple of soccer fields.
But here again, you gotta, you also have to, you know, think about the lighting. You have other things that have to go into that. You have parking, you have detention, you have other costs associated with it. So, you know, I, I hate to just throw a number out and say, here's a cost for a field, but, you know, that doesn't include all these other items that you need to be considering. So there's a little bit more to it. But a lot of times when we were working on synthetic turf number, we were saying, what is your price per square foot? Because we know, you know, once that's lower, that big of an area, that's gonna save us a ton of money that way. So it does add up. But, you know, it was something in Albertville where San Mountain Park, they justified that cost in order to bring people in, attract people, staying in hotels.
We have two teams that's going on this weekend.
Yeah.
I'd ask you all.
Oh, great. That's, it's a very nice facility. Yeah, if y'all haven't been there, I'd suggest you're gonna.
Something that nice eventually, I mean, it pays for itself. You know, if you get the, enough people in there.
But Albertville has twenty-one thousand people. We have sixty-seven.
Yeah, 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 don't get me wrong, I would, yeah.
Let me rain on your parade.
No, you're not, no, I wouldn't mean it that way.
But with a sports complex, what by the way do you have to get a thousand people in the town on weekend?
Well, if you don't think that would come in, come over to the complex about noon and Saturday. And I've got nine rural softball teams and then three high school baseball teams. Let's see what kind of crowd we got.
Parking.
Parking's in.
We have no parking.
Didn't Hightower build one recently?
Yes.
How well is it doing?
Very well, yeah.
As I'm saying. And it's like out in the middle of nowhere, ain't it?
Yeah. It is. Side prep.
Yeah.
I lost, I got lost trying to get to the head.
Yeah, because it was like out in the middle of.
It's still in the works.
It's about me. Talking to Cuzzy, actually.
Any other questions?
We see your company is an expert company to do these kind, kind of projects. And we know Andrea, she, she always gives her best effort, whatever she does. And so, I mean, we could feel comfortable, I think, making plans together. Uh, the, the deal is, we've just gotta get a plan in our, our group to, to know what we wanna do and where we wanna do it, you know. We've got this property that's undeveloped. We, we just gotta see if everything we wanna do is gonna fit there. You know, if it don't fit there, we better not put it there, so.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of part of the process is, you know, you, once you have a somewhat of a vision, you can lay things out and say, well, you could do this. I mean, just like with Lincoln Park, we started off with having baseball, softball and then we backed up and then we got into just showing soccer. They took care of the baseball, softball in another location and they just focused in on soccer at that location there. So to a certain degree, we can look at it and then see what fits best on there and look at a couple of different alternatives and say, okay, well, what if we did baseball, softball here? What if we did baseball, softball and soccer? Or what if we just did, you know, just baseball, softball and soccer? So we can look at a couple of different options and see how that lays out and do some cost estimating as a part of that. And then you can say, well, I like, I like option one, but I like this part of option one. Let's put option two and then we'll add this on the option three. So you can kind of pick and choose between the three of them. And then that gives you the best. And then just going through that process helps solicit what is the best end product for you? What's gonna work the best from a budget standpoint and how it fits on the property? So to a certain degree, you gotta kind of roll up your sleeves and kind of do it and kind of understand and kind of work through some of that to make that happen. If you have an idea of what you want, then we can put it down on paper and see if it'll fit. So that, that would be the way I would suggest going about doing it.
Other questions?
Okay, I'm sorry to keep you all so late.
I'm texting you all your video.
Oh, good.
So promise me you'll look at it on your desktop.
It's a beautiful video.
He was proud, he was, yeah.
Very nice.
I wish we could play it, you wanna try?
We tried, we tried.
Um, I'll see. I think I have a couple of people on my phone.
We, we know what eleven hundred feet of.
I just sent it to you, Matt.
Overlay and curved gutter is gonna come.
Yeah.
I think we'll rather this, we already set up a complex all the way around. It's gonna be a mile and a half, so we're gonna go beyond that eleven hundred feet of it. But his name is gonna be expensive, so we can get rid of that.
You've got it on email, you've got it on text, if you'll send it to him.
Okay.
Scott, I'll resend it to you.
Okay.
Tim, I need to send it to you.
We were hoping to have some barometer today on what our new business has brought to us tax-wise. It didn't really reflect in this month's numbers. Our numbers, revenue from retail sales were actually down this month compared to last month considerably. So I don't think we have a measure yet as to what our new drug stuff and restaurants gonna bring in.
Was that due to the weather? Some of the weather issues?
I would say a lot of it could be related, yeah.
Yeah. We didn't open to what, little January, is it?
Yeah, I don't think we will see a whole lot from that, number wise, until next month.
We were pretty crippled for about a week around there, we didn't do much. We had freezing temperatures, almost zero wind chill and, and we were pretty well out of action for a few days.
People hunkered down.
Still showed growth versus last year it looked like, but.
I was hoping we'd see some results in this year, this month's reports. But I looked at the bank statement and the, the tax revenues, it just, it didn't reflect. If it did, it's sad.
I think it'll take them a couple of months to get in the routine of reporting everything for those new businesses. In a few months, I think it'll be pretty accurate.
I'm sorry, I loaded the agenda today with so much, but.
Skip.
Folks were calling needing information like Porter and Higginbotham needed some direction from us. Rodney's got this ten thousand dollar a month deal that he's trying to swallow in. He can't swallow it, we're gonna have to get rid of that bill. We can't afford ten thousand a month for a generator to rent one, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to buy one. That's, and so there are a few things today that were very critical. Three, C3 insisted that they have an audience with us today to get their name in the pot. They saw that we were talking with the retail strategies and they want us to be on board with our local recruiter more than we are some company from, say, out of town. And I can, I can understand their feelings about that. So they wanted to be here and we already had Andrea booked and she brought her associate here. Robin came with her and we thank you for that.
Thank you for working us, I'm sorry you had to stay so late.
We took up a lot of your valuable time today and we appreciate it very much.
Appreciate you.
You've been here before though, you, you worked with her on the, our rec project. We appreciate all the good work you did then.
Yeah.
Unless someone else has, we'll talk more about the Alabama Power visit and their ideas about the spec building. They've got a pretty good plan. We could go online and look at their specifics about their plan for spec buildings. I think they actually have a twenty-year finance plan now if we don't sell it in, in the five years allotted. So if us, we could get a deal with them for a spec building and financing on it if we need it, if we don't get it sold in a allotted time, so.
I got one question. When is the lighting supposed to be finished for the, the street lights? Cause I noticed that there's a portion that there's still the old lights.
Well, we haven't had to start paying the bill on it yet, so we're reaping the benefits.
Okay.
And we still have just a few lights leaving the place. So they haven't changed their bill yet and, and they're gonna.
When are they supposed to finish installs, what I'm asking?
Uh, well, it's supposed to have been long.
Until they put that one in on my, in my street.
There was some little quirk that they were having to get past to, to finish up the job here.
I just noticed there was a segment between like here and Walmart that was still old.
Yeah.
Old street lights.
Yep.
We're gonna follow up on that, try to get it done.